Okay, now I'll hit it hard here. Bring this meeting of the City of Eugene Planning Commission to order. As with every meeting, we start off with opening for public comment. I'm looking and I'm wondering if there's anybody there that wants to comment. Doesn't look like it. So with that, we'll proceed immediately to the city recommendation, city staff recommendation on Envision Eugene. And I immediately have Mr. Reeves and Ms. Gardner here.
I'll kick it off here.
Carolyn.
We're happy today to have the city manager available to present the recommendations for Envision Eugene. This is a similar presentation that was made on Wednesday to the city council. I think this is an opportunity for the planning commission to have fairly kind of high-level discussion about the recommendation after you hear the presentation. And then, as I discussed with the chair and co-chair, to talk about what will be the planning commission's process to review this recommendation, get more familiar with it, and understand it to the point where you feel like you can provide a recommendation, your own recommendation, to the city council. So there will be plenty of opportunity over the next two months for the planning commission to meet, get as deep into the weeds as you really want to about the individual topics. And then, we have a public hearing scheduled in mid-May, May 14th or 16th, I believe. And then, city council won't be acting until after that, in mid to late May. So there's a good two months for this body to talk about your own recommendations. So with that, I'll hand it over to the city manager.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to come in and sort of give the presentation. I'll try to do it a little bit shorter than with the city council, so I'm not sure what your all-agenda is, but a chance if you want to ask some questions of me and then, of course, the staff can talk about lots of detail. There's a couple of you that have been involved pretty heavily through the last couple of years and can answer several of the questions much better than I can, so that would also be a positive. Feel free to weigh in. Just want to talk about a couple of things today as we get started. And I guess I would say that we'll talk a little bit about the mandate, which I think all of you know about our requirement from a state perspective, but then also really evolved into this opportunity, which is more than just the mandate. And I want to talk about the process. It was a different process. We chose a different path. And some of you, I know, were involved in parts of that. And I want to talk about that because I do think it creates a framework of where our intent has been. And then eventually, I'll talk about the recommendation, which is really the sort of the guts of it, and then a little bit around the next steps, which Carolyn has already just outlined for you. Really, when we talk about the state mandate, you're familiar with 3337, which, among other things, Eugene has a requirement to create a Eugene-only urban growth boundary, separated us from Springfield. And specifically, we need to accommodate 20 years' worth of growth, which is our projection of 34,000 people, and that came from Portland State University. And that was a process in and of itself a couple of years ago, in which, through the county, distributed what would be the population, projected population growth in Lane County to the various entities. Our portion of that is at 34,000 people. And the state requires us to accommodate growth. And what that really means is, is to ensure that we have enough lands of various types, housing, industrial, jobs lands, as well as commercial land, to accommodate that. What we found out, though, is we really wanted to use this opportunity to not just meet a state mandate, but to really move beyond that and talk about what is the vision for the next 20, 30 years and beyond for Eugene? And what do we want to be as we contemplate that future? Part of what I think when we talk about Envision Eugene, the state requires a 20-year look, but most of us know, particularly some of us who have, are a little bit grayer in the hair, know that 20 years goes by pretty quickly. And so while we talk about 20 years from a state perspective, really when we talk about the future of Eugene, we're really talking a much larger perspective. And that's a piece that I try to emphasize, is most of the energy gets wrapped up into a line on a map, the urban growth boundary. And that's where the discussion often focuses. But at least from my perspective, that's important for today's story, but really the future story is what do we want to look like for us in the next 20 or 30 years, which is much more than a line on the map. And really relates back to, what I think, a lot of the work that the community resource group did. We have said we want to put this in a triple bottom line format, which we've done. And so I want to talk a little bit about, from an economic, social equity, and environmental standpoint, sort of what is our current reality right now? Because I think that sets the stage for more than just the 20-year mandate, but it really sets the stage for what we're trying to accomplish with Envision Eugene beyond just the 20-year mandate. And so the triple bottom line is the framework that this is fit into. Some of these things you'll already know, but I want to review them because I think they're really pretty key when we think about the future of Eugene. This is a graph that shows unemployment rates over the last many years. It goes all the way back to 1990. And from our perspective, we track pretty closely with the state of Oregon over time. Those are the dark lines. The, we're blue, the orange line is Oregon. And we tend to be a little bit higher over the time, but not so bad. But you can see all of us are higher than the national average for that. But the next slide is the one that I really think about and think has really significance for us. And what this line really shows is, really, as you go back to when the timber industry started, its decline back in the 70s, 80s, and even probably a little before that. Our annual wages, or another way of talking about is median average income, the difference between Lane County and specifically Eugene and the rest of Oregon, our average median income and real wages lags behind the rest of the state by 12, 15, 17 percent. And to me, what that represents is lost opportunity. It represents some of the issues that we have in housing affordability. I think it creates some of our challenges within the school districts. And this has really been an entrenched issue for the last 30 or 40 years. And so from my perspective and from our perspective on staff, one of our real opportunities when we talk about Envision Eugene is, can we help close this gap as we move forward into the future? And so to me, this is actually a critical picture of our current reality and really the future reality that we want to change or best outcome that looks different than this. On the social equity side of things, and some of these things I think are outgrows to that graph you just saw, but we have, you know, a fifth of our population live in poverty as per standards from HUD on income levels for a family of four. I don't recall what that is right now, but it seems like it's 26,000 or something.
It's in the mid-20s.
Mid-20s, 26,300, or something like that. We see public assistance. I think that third bullet's pretty significant. And this is information that was captured through a variety of sources. I know United Way has done some of their work over the last many years around some of these statistics. But that third bullet, to me, essentially says that if the primary wage earner in a family loses their ability to earn that pay, they have less than, they're a month or less away from really out of income, out of money to pay bills, whether utility bills or those kinds of things. 60% of the kids in Bethel School District are eligible for free or reduced lunch, 40% in 4J. A homeless count, you can see there is over 2,100 back in January 2011. Don't know the 2012 numbers yet, but my guess is no better than that. And as you know, the difficulty of some of these statistics is, as the economy still just lags and slugs along, it's harder for these numbers to turn in a different direction. So again, here's a good example of, it's not just about a 20-year state mandate around land, which is where we get the focus. Really, Envision Eugene is, is are there opportunities through the land use process to assist in portions of this? Another couple of pieces on the social equity side, which also is pretty telling, family income, and that's not an annual percentage if you actually were to take a look at the family income from 30 years ago to now versus home values. Things continue to go up, which talks, which really, as you get down into that second bullet, articulates why the second bullet is occurring. We have 40, almost 45% of our households are housing cost burdened. What that means is, is that from federal guidelines, that they're spending over 30% of their income on housing. And so we have a pretty significant portion of our population, either through rent or homeownership, that are housing cost burdened. From the environmental standpoint, things actually look different. And one of the, one of the goals as we think about Envision Eugene is maintaining some of these trends. Because really, over the last several years, the trends have been in a positive direction, in this case, less is better, as far as energy use. And so if you were to take a look at the graph down below, on all three of those measures, natural gas, gasoline, diesel, and electricity, the use is declining. It does have an environmental impact in a positive way, but it also has an economic impact for people in the community. As a percentage of their income, the amount they have to spend on energy decreases. It allows them to have those dollars for other kinds of things, whether it's housing, transportation, utilities, or whatever else they choose to spend that money on. And so these are actually going in a positive direction, so we want to maintain that. We have a variety of other community goals around plans that are already in place. And this is a good place to mention that part of the Envision Eugene, we're trying to build on some things that have already been done and have been continuing to be done in this community. So we're not reinventing and starting from scratch. We're taking a lot of the efforts that have occurred over the last years and many years and trying to bring those into Envision Eugene when it's appropriate. I want to talk a little bit about the process. You know as much as anybody by virtue of your work on the planning commission, and many of you have been in this community a long time, dealing with development, growth issues, that if you've been in Eugene for more than four weeks, you know that growth, no growth can be a very contentious conversation to have in this community for a whole lot of reasons. And part of what we've tried to do is try to move beyond that conversation and have a conversation that can focus us less on our fears around growth or no growth, and really trying to identify what's the best outcomes that we're trying to achieve. And part of what we've done, or trying to do, and we didn't accomplish, we didn't get all the way there, we didn't accomplish all that we wanted to in this process, but I think we did move down the road quite a ways. Traditionally, what happens is we get in sort of our camps, kind of have this friction and contentious conversation, and we try to figure out how to compromise. And in that compromise, we, something gets passed or doesn't get passed, and then it kind of depends on how the power structure plays itself out at any given moment, depends on how that compromise gets changed into the future. And so what we said is, rather than trying to figure out how to compromise, why don't we try to figure out on how to use all that energy, focus on best outcomes, and try to land in a third place as opposed to trying to compromise? And so we've been, I think we've done some of that as we've worked through Envision Eugene. Again, we didn't accomplish that completely, but I think we've gotten down that path in some interesting ways. We've also said that this isn't one or a few perspectives. My intent and our staff's intent, our team intent, has been to really listen, learn, try to capture the collective wisdom of the community and to present a recommendation that reflects that. And so the recommendation isn't John's vision for Eugene in the next 20 or 30 years. My recommendation is really based on thousands of hours and hundreds of conversations, much research, and a whole lot of that, trying to learn and reflect back to the community, the collective wisdom of all of that information. And that's really been the intent of what I've tried to do in this recommendation. And so it's not capturing a perspective or two. We've also said that yesterday may or may not be the best predictor of tomorrow. And while we want to take a look at what's been accomplished, we want to take a look at past trends, we want to honor those, we want to take those into the future, it is not the only predictor of tomorrow. And so what we've tried to also do is learn about and synthesize and then incorporate some of the best thinking around tomorrow and bring that into our recommendation today. We've also not prioritized as much as we have balanced. And so one of the frameworks I talked about was the triple bottom line framework, where it's the environmental, social equity, and economic. We have not said that one of those is of higher priority than the other. Instead, what we've said is, let's try to balance those three in the recommendation. It's the same way when we talk about the seven pillars. For different people in the community, they will have a higher priority placed on any particular one of those pillars. What we've said is, is it's not about prioritizing, it's trying to find the balance. And ideally, we find the perfect sweet spot in there that achieves the best outcome within that balance. We know we didn't accomplish it 100%, but that's really what the intent is. All have been invited into the conversation. There has not been any exclusivity. We've been very inclusive in all. Sometimes what happens in public processes is we'll sort of create a group of, a committee of some sort, and then they're sort of empowered with certain powers. Sometimes that's extremely appropriate. In this case, we didn't think so, and so we have invited and have outreach in multiple ways. The last one's an interesting one to me. Chris Pryor, a couple of months ago, introduced this concept to me, puzzle versus mystery. That's my third attribution to Chris, because after you attributed it three times, you can, you don't have to attribute it to anyone anymore, you can take it on yourself. So that was my third one.
Seriously.
But I think this is a, a puzzle is like a Jigsaw puzzle, where what you're doing is you're collecting all the pieces, putting them together, and then revealing the story and the answer. And a mystery, it's more like a Sherlock Holmes, all that information's there, and what you have to do is really just be really thoughtful and try to reveal what, from what is already there. Sometimes what we do is we treat a mystery as if it were a puzzle, meaning that we have the information, but what we're really doing is continuing to try to collect more and more pieces to help us reveal the answer or the story in that. I think in our case, we've done a little bit of both, and have tried to do both. There's been lots and lots and lots of information and data, extremely well done. And I know, Rick, you were really involved in this. I know Ed behind me was very involved in this, and some others, in really doing pretty amazing work around some of this, adding to the puzzle. But at the end of the day, I think, part of what Envision Eugene is, is the mystery and trying to use that collective wisdom and all those pieces to reveal something, which we've tried to do. Sort of going from broad, a little bit narrower into the recommendation itself, some of the best outcomes that we've talked about is employment, housing, services, education opportunities. Again, we're trying to be broad and really achieving what is the community that we're looking for in the next 20 or 30 years. I've talked about this, balance, it's aligned behind things like the triple bottom line, aligned behind the council goals and the outcome, aligned behind a lot of the information that we have been receiving from the community. So here's what we're really thinking about or talking about when we talk about recommendations. One of the high priorities is protecting neighborhood livability. Most of us move into our neighborhood, one, that we can afford, but two, that also offers the environment in which we want to live. I happen to live in the southeast. We like the access to the ridgeline trails and all those kinds of things. I know, John, you're out in River Road. I presume that what you like is the character of River Road, and that's why you live out there and choose to do that. And so one of the things we've said is, and this is, in my career, I have found, with very few exceptions, most people aren't excited about having lots of new, different kinds of things on the property next to them. They can have a pretty good academic discussion about somebody else's property and let them do something different, but when it comes right down to right next door to them, they kind of like what they have. And so what we've said is, absolutely. And I think that came out very strongly in the community resource group, is that we want to protect our neighborhood livability. And part of what that means is, is we're not planning for, through Envision Eugene, for any higher densities than are already allowed in neighborhoods. Now, we also know that there are neighborhoods and places within neighborhoods in which that even creates tension around what's currently allowable versus what neighbors would describe as protecting their neighborhood livability. And so one of the strategies that is already moving out of the gate, and is first out of the gate, are in the River Road, Santa Clara, and the neighborhoods around the universities to do neighborhood planning, to try to relieve some of the tension along those fault lines between neighborhood and transit corridors, or where there's more urban dense populations or development. So that's a, we recognize that. We've also said that we do want to be compact and urban over time, but we don't want to grow into the neighborhood, so we really want to try to grow along those transit corridors in the core commercial areas. Downtown's a good example of core commercial area. E-Web would be another example of that. And really try to focus some of our development and redevelopment along those corridors. We also know that while we can't, we're not going to be able to accommodate all of that on there, so we are going to have to bump the urban growth boundary out, I believe, in order to accommodate future growth. We want to support development where we want it. And essentially, what that means is, is let's help, whether it's through incentives, whether it's through codes, whether it's through any of the regulations that says, here's where we would like to encourage development and provide opportunities along these corridors and core commercial areas. So are there some things that we can do to help support that? Farmland and natural resources, one. The state requires us to do the best we can in protecting those from expansion. And we have done that, I believe, as far as where we have chosen to recommend expansion. And then being adaptable and flexible. One of the things that has been a strong message is, we just can't set a marker now and 20 years later come back to it and then try to see what happened. What we really need to do is, knowing that we are 100% not accurate in our crystal balling of the future, what we want to be able to do is set up a formal way of monitoring, collecting data, analyzing that data, and then making changes on an ongoing basis based on that information. And so what we'll be recommending, or have recommended, is five-year check-ins. We'll go through the data monitoring, let's check in to see how we're doing. The one caution I would say is, five years is not a long time, and you're not going to necessarily see long-term trends in five years. You get sort of the short-term blips. And so we have to be thoughtful. A short-term blip may or may not mean we're going to start adjusting everything, but what it does do is it starts to establish a direction that we're headed. And if we continually monitor, if we do need to come back and make some changes, let's do that. And let's be thoughtful about that. And so we're really continuing to move to our best outcomes, not just hanging out for 20 years waiting for something to happen. So that's a key part of the recommendation. You know all of this. I mentioned earlier, we've just, I think, been very much involved in outreach. In fact, from my perspective, in my almost 25-year career, this is the project that has experienced the most community involvement. And I would say it's in really a positive way. We've asked people to weigh in. You've seen these pillars. The reason why I bring them up here primarily is just as a reminder that it's about balance. It's not about priority, it's about balance, which we've tried to do. On the economic front, we have a JU Regional Prosperity Plan, which many partners in the region have over the last couple of years, but moving forward on a variety of things we need to continue to implement. That, one of the pieces that came out of there from a Eugene perspective was land and ensuring enough infrastructure, land infrastructure particularly, to help close those gaps around unemployment and median, average median income. We said we can meet our commercial need within the existing urban growth boundary. We want to consolidate and redevelop vacant lands and develop sites. That's not necessarily inexpensive, but we want to do that. But we also recognize that we do need to expand the UGB for industrial sites, and we want to protect them for their intended use into the future, which essentially says is, if we have lands that we've said are going to be part of our job producing lands into the future, we don't want to redesignate those for something else, because we've said we need them to help close that gap. This is, when we talk about job growth, up until, gosh, six months ago, the safe harbor, and the safe harbor is really the state's place that says, if you pick this number, it can't be appealed. It's sort of by right, you can pick that number. Safe harbor has been .88%. But the state recognizes, and appropriately so, that that doesn't really move us beyond this recession that we've been experiencing for the last couple of years and will continue to experience for the next couple of years. So .88, while it's a safe harbor, we would say too low of an assumption. It doesn't really account for Eugene being a job center. If you see up there, even at 1.4% job growth rate, we expect to have more jobs and population increase, but we would expect, intuitively, that just makes sense, right? There are people that don't live in Eugene that come to work in Eugene. We'd expect that to occur, that there will be people that don't work in Eugene, or work in Eugene that won't live here. And so we would expect our job growth to be higher than population. So that just makes sense. The other safe harbor is 1.66, which the state came out with in the last six months or so. What we've said is, that's probably a little high. It's a 10-year outlook. It really is accelerated primarily, I think, to try to get us to reflect the recession. Growing at that rate as we move through the recession and beyond, as we kind of rebuild some of that capacity that's out there, plus build capacity, it's probably not realistic or reasonable. That's what we're going to continue to move towards over the long term. And so we've landed on 1.4. There are others in this room that could articulate sort of more into detail how that came about. But, so that's where we landed in, as far as job growth. Remember, we really are trying to think about compact urban development, and so, you know, we do expect over 90% of the job growth to be inside the current UGB. I do want to say, I'll get back, I'll get to the caveat here in a minute. We've talked about new commercial jobs, 100% inside the UGB. With the government jobs, one of the recommendations is to expand for about 60 acres of land for the Bethel School District, which, of course, when they develop that out, will actually have government employees out there. So there will be some government jobs outside the current UGB. And then a little over 70% of the new industrial jobs- And then, a little over 70% of the new industrial jobs will be inside the urban growth boundary. And when we think in industry, I think we need to think beyond just, it's really those job centers, those properties that produce sort of economic jobs. So this, I don't know, has the Planning Commission seen these kinds of graphs before? So you're familiar with these? This one's for the commercial side, I don't know if we've shown that much, but it works the same as we've done for the housing. Essentially, what this says, this is how many commercial jobs that are needed, a little over 21,000 in the next 20 years. And remember, that's usually that 1.4% job growth rate. Our existing capacity, if you look along the bottom, vacant lands can accommodate almost 4,000 of those jobs. Partially vacant land means you can, there's something on there, but you can build something more on there. Existing built space, a good example, it's a Takotai Building down here on Broadway in Willamette where there's existing space that commercial will be built into that. Baseline redevelopment is, if we don't do anything, if we're pretty laissez-faire about encouraging, providing incentives, opportunities, we would expect 2,700 jobs to come just by virtue of the natural flow of the market in that sense. The displaced capacity is, you have to remind me...
It's multifamily housing in University of Oregon uses.
Multifamily housing in University of Oregon uses that are currently zoned as commercial?
Yes.
That would be rezoned as multifamily or for university uses?
Don't necessarily have to be rezoned, but they'll displace job capacity by being on that property.
Okay. So that has to, it's a negative, but it, so what it shows is that it's no longer existing capacity. And then, the new capacity in the UGB, expand the flexibility, and that is really primarily a zoning, right? Some of the small partial industrial, we could rezone as commercial as an example. And then, I think that boosts redevelopment. While it's only 400 jobs, it is important because what that says is, is if we're, if we're just going to be pretty laissez-faire, we'll get the 2,750. In order to get the other 400, we really need to be thinking about targeting, could be incentives, targeting codes or regulations in those places that actually help boost the natural pace. We talked about that, adding flexibility. Again, we're trying to boost the redevelopment in these core commercial areas. As we move more towards the industrial side, there's been quite a bit of work around key industries, and the key industries really represent things that are doable, they're realistic, but they're also have some inspiration to them, meaning that based on some work through our JEO plan, also the Chamber has done some work, these are the kinds of industries that we could expect over the next 10, 15, 20-plus years to locate or expand within Eugene. And so, each one of these then starts to have characteristics that are needed from a land perspective in order to make this a reality. What this is saying is, is a part of our future economy, the growth in our population and growth in our economy will, we hope, occur through these kinds of businesses because they have a good probability of being able to come into here. So we have to have the infrastructure available to do that. So this is what that, that means from a site perspective. The size class represents acres. So we've said, the less than 10 acres, while that one's really related to how many jobs we can capture as opposed to number of sites needed, the reason why is, there are a lot of less than 10-acre sites. We can, we need X amount of jobs on those kinds of sites. We actually think we have more than that, so we provide a bit of an excess over there of 1,131. Really, some of that then moves towards our ability to meet the commercial need. So having some surplus there, we're actually able to help meet some of that commercial. But when you get down below that line, you can see for acres, site sizes from 10 to 20, we need 15 sites. Existing within the current UGB, there are six. New capacity within the UGB, four. And those aren't easy to obtain, we're talking about, or ready, we're talking about partial assembly, which is not easy, if you're familiar with that, and brownfield cleanup, which is, can be expensive. But what we're saying is, is let's be aggressive but reasonable and realistic. And so, of those 15 sites, four of them, we're going to try to capture through some pretty aggressive strategies around assembly and cleanup. But it still says, we need five sites of that size to expand outside the current UGB. So you can read that chart all the way down. What it says is, we need 12 sites to meet really what our key industry targets are for the future of our economic growth, which has really been trying to close that graph that we showed early on in the slide. So it kind of relates all the way back to that. The one thing that we've had, the people that have been working on these things remind me that says, when we talk about the amount of acres that are required to meet this need, just be cautious because it's really, we need 12 sites within these kind of distributions. So if we, if we need five sites that are 10 to 20 acres and they all happen to be 12-acre sites, that's a different amount of acres than if, some of them are 12 and some of them are 15. So just know, when we talk about the acres, the 475 acres, if it comes out to be 474 or 476, people should panic because we're really trying to identify specific sites. And so, what, what we've said is, for industrial jobs, we consolidate brownfield cleanup to get about 60 acres, expand for additional 12 sites. Again, it's that 475 with all the caveats that I just talked about. The reason why is, and you see it already, people glom onto 475 and that becomes the number that everybody talks about. It may be absolutely the number, but it may not be exactly the number based on what sites are actually available out there. Remember, we need 12 sites in that distribution, so we'll find 12 sites in that distribution. And our intent is to place them all in the area that I'll show you here in a minute. So I don't want people to get so hung up, so when the, when the number's a little bit different, people panic around that because we're trying to achieve a particular goal. So this...
Good job.
Got it this time, right? I'm a quick study. Last time, I went through this and didn't realize the animation.
But once he did, he played with it for a while.
It's pretty cool.
Yes. It's a tough thing ahead of the curve. What you can see is, those areas are for the commercial or flexible employment designation, which is, we've talked about particularly on the commercial side. And that's our recommended expansion area. That represents about 500 acres. Our intent will be is to find the 12 sites within that particular area. So that's our recommendation on the industrial side. If you've been following some of the work sessions, there are some other areas that we looked at, North Game Farm Road area. Turns about farmland, there's some floodplain issues over there, a couple of things like that. LCC Basin, there's actually a spot over there that into the future, I think we're going to want to take a look at, but it's, you'd really have to gerrymander to get over to that in the state law, probably would preclude that. But there are some land over there that we want to continue to look at, particularly for commercial office kinds of headquarters, that's what we often think about, but more of the office, commercial job centers. Housing, what we've said is, we can meet our multifamily housing within the current UGB. And again, if you think back to some of those slides early on about 44% of people in Eugene are cost burdened with housing, so part of what we're trying to do is address some of those kinds of things. One of our, and I'll show you some of these, is if you were to take a look at the number of acres that we're adding to the inventory of single-family homes, not all outside the UGB. You know, we're adding 600 to 700 acres plus of new area for single-family homes. Essentially, it wasn't available before, but it will be available now, part of it through redesignation, a part of it through expansion of the urban growth boundary. One of, I think one of the principles that we're trying to meet here is to be cautious, but we don't want to artificially constrain the market. Total number of homes is close to 15,000. My recommendation's a 55-45 split, and you've seen this before. Some of you have been intimately involved in this discussion over time. And we can go into the reasons why, for me, 55-45 makes sense. Again, it's a little bit about yesterday, it's a little bit about tomorrow in that conversation to try to get to this particular point. But I think that's reasonable, but you can kind of work through the numbers there. What people eventually want to see is, what does that mean for acres? It does say that we can get about 94% of our expected housing within our current urban growth boundary. Again, part of this is that flexible and adaptable pillar seven. As we work through and actually, things happen on the ground, we monitor that and we'll assess and then adjust as we go forward. So it may mean that it goes up or down based on what really actually happens on the ground. Multifamily need, similar charters to the last one. If you look all the way over to the right, that boost density and redevelopment, that is a key piece of this. It means that we, we probably just can't be laissez-faire, laissez-faire, because if we're, if we don't start getting that, what that means is, that really does, is we go through the pillar seven flexibility piece, and we're not doing any of that, it may mean we're going to have to adjust the amount of land outside the urban growth boundary we're going to have to bring in for multifamily housing. So we do need to make sure that we're being aggressive in our strategies. Again, we're looking along the transit corridors, core commercial areas, where we really want to try to create that, knowing all what I talked before about some of those caveats around those, the clashes in some of the neighborhoods that they're experiencing now, and we want to be very cognizant of that. Single-family housing, you can kind of look through all of this. The pieces that I, I'll take over to the right, redesignation, I'll show those, and then the UGB expansion over to the right side, which provide, both combined, provide opportunities for single-family homes that weren't available prior to. So we suggest, recommend redesignating over 230 acres of what's currently inside the urban growth boundary for single-family homes. I'll show you where those areas are in just a moment. There are some opportunities to improve some infrastructure, transportation, wastewater in the UGB. I currently constrain some lands. As that gets built or unconstrained or those obstacles are removed, that will provide some additional acres inside the current urban growth boundary. The additional alley access houses, secondary dwelling units, that's true, but creates, I don't know, 100 new?
160.
160, so it's a relatively small number. But then also, expanding the UGB by 350 acres. And remember again, it's, that number can change because it's 350 acres that you can actually build on. And so, it may mean that you, if you have to get 351 acres in order to get 350 acres to build on, because we need to make sure that people stay aware of those kinds of things, so. So the areas that redesignation, on the top there, part of that is next to the, and part of it is, the River Ridge Golf Course. Down to the left is, how many acres is that over to the left? Quite a bit.
Yeah, it's close to 300 by Green Hill and Crow Road.
Yeah, Green Hill, Crow Road, 300 acres over there, which opens it up. And then, we've also said, here's our two expansion areas for that 236 acres, about 150 up there, south of Clear Lake, and then the remainder down there off of Gimble Hill and Bailey Hill Road. Part of what we're trying to do is provide a variety of places which have different characteristics. And if you were to go all the way back to some of the data that was collected, part of our housing portfolio, the shortage in that is not just affordable housing, there's actually sort of part of this mid or upper mid-range housing, I think, that is lacking for us. And so, what we want to do is just make sure we're providing a variety of areas for people to build, a variety of different kinds of housing stock. Some of the other pillars as we go through, planning for climate change, energy resilience. Keystone of this is, one, our already existing Community Energy Action Plan, which we continue to roll out. That was a very community-based program, pretty broad-reaching, has a lot of good stuff in that. One of our, the fundamentals of this, or the foundation, are 20-minute neighborhoods, and that's really the, trying to provide neighborhoods in which people who are non-motorized, I should probably say non-vehicle, car, transport, be able to get to places to shop and recreate and commercial and all of those kinds of things within 20 minutes of a neighborhood, so we're working hard on that. Here's just an example of the heat map that was done for what are now currently existing 20-minute neighborhoods, and it's not to talk about this as much as just to show that there's actually been a lot of work done on this. Another one that is a really important one is promoting compact urban development. And we've already talked about not needing to expand commercial multifamily, but what this really is, is creating this density and urban feel along corridors and in the core commercial area. In 20 years, there'll be some things that look different, but we're not going to look like San Francisco in 20 years, nor I suspect in 100 years, because I don't think we're going to get that kind of a growth. But we're not going to be that urban, that dense, that compact in 20 years. But what we are saying is, is we do want to accommodate a good portion of our growth in the next 20 years along these kinds of corridors. And we're going to have to be proactive in doing that. And if you look through the pillars document, there are some strategies in there that try to get at some of that specifically, and we're going to have to keep doing that, keep modifying and updating some of those strategies as we go. And these, you've seen before, what we talk about, our corridors and core commercial areas, that's generally what we're talking about. So you can see we're talking about the, that core part of the community. Just wanted to show this as an example of a plan that you all might be familiar with already along South Willamette. And I think this talks about, demonstrates a variety of things. One is, the kind of plans that we want to do in various spots around transit corridors and core commercial areas to try to figure out how to help increase the density along those corridors. But it also is a good example of how we want to work with neighborhoods and protecting the livability of the neighborhoods and what can be those clashes along those fault lines. And so, that's what we're trying to accomplish with this, and I think it's going pretty well, really. Walnut Station would be another one of those examples of a good plan, where the codes are sort of unique for that particular area, so it's not a one-size-fits-all, which this won't be a one-size-fits-all, becomes critical, and also is trying to deal with a whole lot of different issues and balance those through. Neighborhood livability, we've talked quite a bit about this already. And know a density increases beyond what's currently allowed. The one piece that's probably different than that is in opportunity siting, or opportunity sites within neighborhoods in which the neighborhoods themselves would see as a benefit to increase some density or add some commercial. And so, we do want to work with neighborhoods in that. That is not contrary to this pillar, it's actually being in conjunction with that. Neighborhood plans, we talked about in the university area, River Road Santa Clara, first out of the gate, because they're, they have been and continue to be on sort of that front edge of that conflict between the development and neighborhood protection. And then, we recommending expanding for parks in Santa Clara. And then we recommending expanding for parks in Santa Clara and Bethel School District. And so also for schools, and Bethel School District has said they have 80 acres that they own outside the UGB that they'd like to bring in, so we said, okay, let's do that. And the parks, we continue to have the plan for inside a UGB, but also adding 240-plus acres outside the UGB. I'll show you where both of these are in just a moment. In fact, is this one out of Pen State?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
There's the school.
There's the school property, so it's, and then those are the two parks areas that we recommend bringing into the urban growth boundary. I remember on the natural resources side, some of our graphs are really going in the right direction, and so we want to continue to encourage that and protect those directions that we're moving. I'm just showing you a couple of examples of some things that are already have been underway, and remember, we're trying to leverage and capitalize on work that's already been done as opposed to creating new. This is a Willamette River Open Space Vision map. And then lastly, the pillar seven, which we've talked about quite a bit. Example of the kinds of things we'll be wanting to monitor, and again, this needs to be not ad hoc, but it needs to be a much more formal, thoughtful, deliberate process going forward. Just briefly, I think that middle sentence is telling, planning for increase of about 20%, 3% increase in our urban growth boundary, I think it's pretty reasonable. If you think about what we're trying to achieve, we're trying to be reasonable but realistic. We're not trying to, we don't want to artificially constrain the market, but we also want to meet some of our goals of being a urban community, particularly along corridors and in the When we thought about where to expand, there's a whole lot of reasons for that. Some of, these are good examples of why we chose some versus not. In our single-family housing, one of the places that we looked at was off of Crest Drive, south of Crest Drive. Cost of utility was quite, pretty steep there, and so that's why that tended to drop off. And in any particular area, some people can talk in detail about those. A little bit of a recap. Let me remember this from CRG days. And I, the important part to this, I think, is a couple messages. One is, people really do like this community. There's a lot of fabulous things around that. And I think our recommendation, we have really attempted to honor this in our finding balance for how do we continue to grow as a community and not, and in places where we expand our UGB, to keep this in mind as well. So we have referenced this. Carolyn, talked about next steps? And that's it. So, here for questions, comments?
Commissioner Randall.
Well, I'd just like to-
Thank you.
Yeah. That's what I was going to do, I'd just like to thank you and staff and all the community members that put so many hours into all of this. I think it has turned out well. I think for me, the thing that is probably the biggest takeaway has been the word balance, and I just really appreciate that, because I think, and you mentioned in the council work session, just the idea that there's some things here that people can like and things that people can hate, but yet it's a balance, and I just appreciate that.
Commissioner Liddick.
Yeah, John, you came to this community, I think, about four years ago and jumped right into this process, and I think it's a commendable job. Some 30 years ago, Rick and I participated in the Metropolitan Area Planning Advisory Committee, Mapek Group, which was similar to CRG, that only involved 15 to 20 people representing the county and the two cities. And CRG, of course, just focused on this one. And that was taking Eugene's 1990 plan and evolving it into the Metropolitan Area General Plan that we're dealing with today. And the level of detail, the sophistication at that time nowhere near approached what's happened with this process. Certainly over 30 years, the legal and technical complexities and the knowledge and sophistication of the state land use planning system has evolved as well. But I just finished reading a book called Planning Paradise, which is a critique of Oregon's 30 years of land use planning. And coming out of that book, looking at the mistakes that have been made and so forth, the recommendations of the authors, U of O professors, is that we really need to pay attention to citizen involvement and keeping the vision of where we want to go in front of us. And we just had a retreat where we heard from a planning consultant dealing with the Damascus debacle and talking about keeping the vision in place. And I think your approach and your guidance, your recommendations, your direction in all this, in keeping in vision Eugene, keeping that vision of where we want to go has been commendable. Digging into the weeds and compliments to Rick Duncan for, and Ed McMahon and everybody else on the TRG for getting into the weeds, that's just in my view extraordinary, and I kind of feel sorry for communities that have to follow Eugene now, if that's the standard that's been established. I think the outreach, the citizen outreach, I'm sure there will be critics that feel we could have done more or need to do more, but the extent to which the planning department, and I know that was in large part taken on by Terry, has just been incredible, using the internet, the workshops that have been accomplished, that will continue to be accomplished, I think will, has to, to a great extent, satisfy the critique that came out of the book that I was just talking about in terms of trying to get citizen involvement and getting the sense, the values of the community incorporated into this expansion. Beyond that, it becomes a legal and technical exercise in determining the number crunching and where we can and cannot go with urban growth boundary expansions. So overall, I think it's just been a laborious, taken much longer than I would have appreciated to done project, but overall, I'm looking forward to taking this to the public, explaining, attempting to explain everything to everybody and getting a reaction from them. But overall, just compliments to you and the staff and all the volunteers who spent thousands of hours putting this plan together.
Carolyn?
I just did want to let folks know that we will be posting the recommendation document and all the supporting information on the website later today, hopefully by the end of business today. Keep your fingers crossed. So there is, we're rolling this out kind of in pieces, but you will have all that, and we will make hard copies of all of you, for all of you, if you would like them. And then we will have opportunities to kind of dig into that documentation at further meetings.
Commissioner Liddick.
Not for the critique. No, just a couple, and we've talked about it before, as we go to the public, it's a whole lot of information to synthesize and try to make understandable. I got lost on a couple of the charts. The one is the recommendation on, well, it's a recommendation having to do with jobs, where the concluding lower right-hand corner is 12 sites. The first row refers to jobs, the less than 10 acres jobs, and then you jump into sites, and somehow there needs to be some clarity there. I was going from 6,193 jobs in the less than 10 acres to 15 jobs in the 10 to 20 acres thing until I realized we're talking sites at that point.
Yes. We do that because there's so many of the small, that we just need to-
I understand that. It's when we go out to the public-
Go out there, make it clear.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and this is an important question, this goes to the slide that's entitled Homes, it's the map that shows the two areas where we're looking at expanding the urban growth boundary. And I just have to ask, and make sure we do this, that we have the facts and figures available that shows that those two areas in particular are serviceable in a cost-effective manner, and perhaps showing why the other ones aren't as cost-effective. I know that, well, I'm certain those meet agricultural and priority, all the priority criteria, but it's that cost issue that we talked about when we last reviewed this. I think for the public's purposes, we need to be able to demonstrate the reason for going into those areas. And I just, you know, on a final comment too, is, I guess, complex and difficult as this process was, I kind of, I don't think I'm going to be around for the next 20-year growth plan. That's going to be a challenge, given the current constraints and projections that we have to deal with. That's going to be something for somebody else to deal with. Rick will still be here, but damn straight. He'd make us my livelihood.
Commissioner Velcher.
Well, thank you. I think this is an excellent presentation that, having started at ECLR and getting to here, my biggest concern is that how will the public engage? And I think when you see how the forums work out in the next couple of weeks, I would encourage you to be flexible. If there's a broad range of involvement and perhaps difficulty in absorbing all this, there's so much here. And those of us that have been in it probably can't appreciate just how challenging it would be for someone to try to engage at this point. So I would encourage you and the council, if you see that the public needs more time, that that time be made available. We've put many years in thus far. I don't want to wait forever to get to the finish line, which is really the starting line, but I would hope that the public has opportunities to digest and provide feedback. And I think when they do, I think they'll be fairly appreciative of what's here. I think it's a great plan, with a few minor exceptions that you'll hear about later. Thank you.
Commissioner Hartman.
Duncan.
Excuse me, Rick. Go for it. Commissioner Duncan, sorry, Rick.
I was just going to kind of wait to the end and just add that when I heard the presentation last week, council, I was here, and one of the things I found is that it's, in my mind, well-balanced. As a person who's been involved in this, I would have done other things differently, but overall, I think it's a very balanced recommendation, and I'm certainly in support of what John's brought forth. I'm willing to, as we move through this process, offer my time to any of you if you want to talk specifics on any of it, because you could take this document and make it about this thick, and it probably still wouldn't be all the information that we worked through and gleaned and so on, and I know staff has a lot of it. There's a lot of information, and I hope that as we move forward, when questions come forth, not only from commission but from public and everything, that they'll see that we thought about, we hope, a large percentage of what the questions were coming forth. That was the plan for TRG all the way through, was not to create policy, but to try to answer as many questions as possible, and we brainstormed an enormous amount of things that I don't think staff or state had ever even thought of before and worked through it. Many of the items we got to the end after spending some time on and decided they didn't make any sense, they didn't offer any information, actually, if anything, maybe they were a wrong avenue to follow, but what it did teach us was the ability to get through the data, and as we moved from residential, which was sort of our test case, into the commercial and industrial worlds, we were able to move a lot faster through that data. And again, I offer my services to any planning commissioner. If you've got areas you want to chat about, I'm happy to try to tell you what we did and where it is, and maybe with some staff help, even get you clearer on where we're going, so that when we present a recommendation, we're pretty comfortable with our recommendations going forward.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I also want to reiterate a couple, we're not supposed to repeat, but thank John for his comments about if there is a, you know, from the forums, if there is an interest and concerns about the timing, that it would make sense to, in order to have the process go smoothly and pass that, to extend the time if needed. There's one area that I think I picked up, and I think others might in these forums, that's, because there's some confusion maybe about the wording, but one of the issues would protect, repair, and enhance neighborhood livability. Under ECLR, there was supposed to be no density increases in neighborhoods, existing neighborhoods, and that's sort of gotten merged to now word it as no density increases in neighborhoods beyond what's currently allowed. I think there's, you might get some friction, because what's currently allowed and what is typical is sometimes there's a significant difference there, and that may create some friction within, you know, some communities. So you might want to try to clarify what you mean there. I don't really think you mean what's currently allowed, I think you want to, it's more like what's currently normal, or whatever wording you might come up with, just to try to alleviate some of those concerns. Otherwise, you know, you'll get areas that, you know, South University that's zoned for R4, and they're expecting, you know, or other areas even, R1s areas that are, that would allow them to be built up at a higher, much higher density than were projected by the TRG and so forth.
Rick.
One of the things that TRG really worked hard on the bookends of Safe Harbor, and one of the things that was shocking to me as we started in that process is to find out that since 2006, our community has lost almost 15,000 jobs, which was shocking. And part of the reason for not being, deciding on the 0.88, is the 0.88 job growth number doesn't even get us back to filling those jobs we've lost. So that was part of the reason for the analysis, to go a lot further and just spend some time trying to decide, and of course, the Safe Harbor to all of us didn't make sense, it just seemed like they were sort of arbitrary numbers. And that's why a lot of work went into trying to get to that point, 1.4 growth rate for jobs. It gets us back, it really builds on our industrial, we actually did some segment work on that to sort of grow with the different job segments in our community, to really take a look at those. And actually, by coming off the 1.66, the area that where the job reduction was the most was in the retail. The retail growth pattern under the 1.66 was very, very high. It actually outstripped the population growth, and it's like, for some reason, the way it worked, we would have suggested we needed more retail service jobs as a proportion of population growth, which didn't make sense to a lot of us. So by the change, that's where a lot of that job loss number came, which is really important because all that job growth in the retail would have gone into our commercial corridors without really a lot of sense behind that growth process. In our minds, as we talked about it, it made more sense that the growth of retail jobs would almost be directly related to the population growth. And so part of the job change that you'll see when we run to that 1.4 really was the reduction of a lot of the low-end, lower-paying retail jobs.
I'm going to interject at this point, and then I'll get to you, Randy. One of the comments that I had is, it's kind of a global comment, and it piggybacks onto what Rick is talking about. It's kind of a, little bit of a critique point for the presentation, and one of the starting point comes with your graph on the real average annual wages, where we show not only a gap, but a significant and consistent widening of the gap over time, where Eugene is falling farther and farther behind the state of Oregon. And that's a grave concern, because subsequent slides, you make a point, I think, very effectively that social equity and all the things we need to do socially are inextricably linked to what we do economically. But then, a few slides later, just what Rick was talking about, we talk about job growth, and being the guy that hasn't been involved so much in this, or in the-
And being the guy that hasn't been involved so much in this, or in the TRG, we show ourselves taking a goal that's less than what Oregon is taking. So this, this appears to present that not only is the gap widening, but we're choosing to continue to widen it. Now, I don't believe that's your intent, but if I'm sitting here with my industrial hat on and I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, geez, look at this, it's, it's widening, it's terrible, and they're choosing to continue widening it. So that's a, that's a perception in your presentation that I think some can come away with.
Yeah, just following on that, John, you mentioned that that 1.66 was something that happened in just the last six months, as I recall. Before that, where was it? Where was that?
.88.
Pardon? Just at .88, there wasn't a spectrum on it?
No, just one number.
Oh, I see.
You just do one number. Yeah, before in the past.
Oh, wow.
I don't think it's really understood it. The state handed us another one, and said, oh, this could be Safe Harbor, too.
And that's because there were new projections done.
And there are, legally, you can, so our old employment growth rate was .88, which is the same as our population growth. And legally, you can use your population growth as your employment growth rate as well. So you have actually two Safe Harbor options. We decided neither of them were appropriate for our 20-year planning window.
And that any advantages that might be gained in the safety of not being able to appeal a Safe Harbor were outweighed by having a number that closely reflected our needs.
Jeff, I think this is a really pretty interesting comment. But I, I think, listening a little bit to Rick, and what I, and he could articulate it better, I think it's, maybe I'm thinking too simplistically. The difference in those numbers would represent jobs that are probably paying less than the average median income. If you're, if you're capturing those extra jobs by that higher percent, in some ways, you're actually compounding your issue, because you're, you're adding more to the base that are paying less than the average median income, which creates a problem. And so I think part of what we're saying is that jobs we're trying to capture are the, those in those key industries that actually help close that gap. So would I say that, did I say that kinda right, Rick? So that's how I kinda, but I think it's a pretty thoughtful comment. I'm just-
I'm just saying that there might, you might consider how to convey that.
Yeah, because I can see exactly how you, you cannot connect those dots, and it feels like we're creating the problem, when in fact, I think, we're actually trying to solve the problem based on sort of the jobs that those, that extra .26 represent, right? So-
Commissioner Jaworski. Did you wanna-
I just wanted to kinda add that.
All right.
One of the other things that was recognized in our analysis work is that you actually create, when you redevelop retail in our core areas, it tends to create a negative job gain, meaning that we actually, when you redevelop commercial in an area, you actually lose jobs, because retail tends not to have the same number of jobs per acre as typically other uses would be in those, in those market areas. So the idea of trying to measure and expand, and the number was fairly significant. I don't remember the acreage, but about 100 acres was needed, simply to offset the retail, planned retail growth employment, which, as we completed our analysis, simply kept coming back to the same thing. It doesn't make sense to try to create low-value jobs that possibly create negative employment impacts in the areas that redevelopment would occur in.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Slightly redundant. I do want to say, as a new commissioner, I was, have been really impressed with the professionalism of staff, the involvement of this particular process, and actually overwhelmed by the productivity of staff in the, in the various documents. In looking at this presentation today, and also listening to it on the tapes when it was presented, what I would like to, to see, or I don't know where it will happen in the process, is that, that envision Eugene doesn't end up like envision in policy and goal statements of a lot of other plans, or comprehensive plans that have been done. And, and the limited amount of people that I've spoken to, when you, when you talk about a vision, it would be nice if it could be articulated in a few paragraphs. And secondly, the people are going to ask in this, so that it's not a shelf document, what are some of the implementation strategies to achieve this, in this vision? You know, how, how does one go about these selected jobs? Which of those key industry sectors, when they, if they did come in, have the wages that we want? How do we encourage that? If we're gonna have a 34,000 population growth, and, and I know in their projections, they don't do the mix, well, what mix do we see? You know, definitely, we're not one of those, like a small rural community says, we want all retirement people to come in, so we'll encourage that. Well, who do we want out of that 34,000? What kind of, you know, mix would we like to see come in to our community? And how do we go about in doing that, so that it fits our other things we want to see in wage growth, those types of activities? And specifically, in when you look at this, and it all came out to land use, and it all came out to, as you had said, John, lines on a paper, and the urban growth boundary being expanded, I guess what I'm looking for is, is how do you, how do you influence or implement those kinds of things that you want? Sometimes the code can't do it, because the code is very, very, as I'm finding out, very definitive, very exact, you know, it's, it's very nitpicky. And yet, at the same time, how do you get the general vision on top of that? Because you can't write that into the code. And is, does that come from the comprehensive plan that's being developed? And, and how, how do you make it so that when, in our role as planning commissioners, we're always looking at, you know, land use involvements, or this development is occurring, this industry wants to build, this housing development is occurring? Well, how do we see that when it's being reviewed at the staff level, and they look at the code, what are they also looking at that says what we want to have them achieve? And, and a final thing, and we talked about it a lot here, and that's probably why it's stuck in my mind, is, is in that envision of what you're happening, how do we provide protection between the transitions of zones, and how those zones impact even with, let's say, key transportation corridors? You know, you can look at a zone, but then you look over here, and you say, well, what is that rationale? And what is the envision of Eugene, and how does that get implemented there? So those are my, my kinda key things, because I know that people are gonna ask that. And you won't have all the answers, but I think once you start to go out into the public, you should have some. In other words, if you're gonna create these jobs, you know, people see this new land being developed, well, does that mean we're on an attraction strategy? What are we doing for retention of existing businesses? And how much can we expand and help them, so that some of this will be filled? They may be asking those questions. We should have some kind of answers for them in these public forums.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, remember I said I had a couple of concerns? I'll talk about them now. The biggest one for me is, is I try to do the math very quickly here. It looks like for acreage of industrial land growth, there's maybe 10 to 15% that would be covered by partial assembly and by brownfield development, and 85 to 90% by greenfield development. And to me, that's not ambitious enough on the redevelopment and reuse of brownfields. And I think you'll hear that again, but I just want to point that out. The other one is for the future, and that is, how do we actually implement this? I think the biggest challenge is going to be providing housing affordability. And I think we need to do that by growing our job base. But we also need to look at how we can, I know incentivize is not the word we want to use, but how do we make it possible for young people and people of modest income to be able to actually afford to buy housing in this community? And if we don't do that, I think Eugene will tend to be a community that we really don't want to get to. So I think there are opportunities there, but I don't think it's gonna be easy, especially with the current economic status of the city and ability to incentivize things. So I look forward to seeing how that turns out. But I think the industrial lands ones you'll hear about.
Yeah, and I agree with that, that we'll hear about it. I don't agree with their conclusion, but I agree that we'll hear about that. And I think part of it, for me, goes back, it ties into housing affordability. It ties into all of those kinds of things, that we do want to be aggressive on the brownfield redevelopment, absolutely. But I don't, I don't think that, to me, is the, is the realistic solution, because, one, the cost, two, the ability to do that, and the time it will take. I just, I think it, it represents lost opportunities, at least the near term, and the intermediate term, but for the longer term, I think maybe more so. But the near term, I just think it's, it's an opportunity that's lost. And, you know, we use the Rusty Rexius example, you know, Rexius Company, which I think is just, it's, it's the, it's the, the reason why we use it for example, because it's, it's kind of the, epitomizes sort of all of this sort of discussion around this. It's, you have a company that's homegrown, been here for a long time, provides the jobs that we all really think about, they pay benefits on, and a lot of their jobs. He wants to really move from his current location, to redevelop that into exactly what we want in the vision Eugene, and what we really want him is to stay in town. Well, he can't stay in town. He sure doesn't have time to wait around for brownfield to be redeveloped. And so, he moves someplace else. And so, while we count it as a win for the redevelopment, it's not a total win, because we're actually losing the company. And so I think about that, and, and think about, we need the, the ability for folks to grow into land, to close the gap. If they don't have that infrastructure, they're not coming, they're not expanding, and that gap isn't gonna close. I don't, it, to me, it doesn't matter what we do, it doesn't close. And so, that, and I know people disagree with that, but that's just sort of my perspective on it.
Can I just follow up a little bit? If, if that's the case, then it might be helpful to see more language about how, over time, we can do better. And I don't see that here.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan.
One of the things that, doing the work in the TRG, I think that I'm gonna suggest that, a general conclusion we came to is, that a lot of the challenges ahead of us with envision Eugene and, and our plan, and John's recommendation, is, the key is, is a better economy. Not only does it help housing affordability and affordable housing, it helps in the redevelopment strategy by making it more likely that redevelopment can occur within our corridors. Because one of the things that, we built a pretty extensive model, that certainly what has gone beyond where most jurisdictions have ever used, to really try to test the redevelopment strategies. And we discovered that redevelopment is, is very, very difficult to do. And so part of the economic growth, if we can create it, then creates more pressure in these redevelopment areas for commercial type, for office uses and things. And will make them more financially possible if we can get a stronger economy and get better wages, because it just all trickles down. And it was really interesting, as we went through a lot of the processes, to, to really understand that economic health and a better economy than what we've had for, as John showed in the chart, for a couple of, three decades now, will really help us achieve a lot of our envision Eugene strategies over the next decade or two. So, one of the reasons I'm certainly supportive of the industrial land is after, one, taking a look at every parcel out there, inside the UGB and outside. The outside is not a whole lot easier to do, but it's, it gives us the land that we don't have. And quite a bit of the analysis we did, sort of laid on in the process, really shows how other communities have not necessarily attracted new industries, but they've allowed their existing industries to grow, because they had the lands those industries needed. And we did quite a bit of work looking at Springfield, and what they have done, and what they've accomplished. And then we also sort of compared that against the Salem market, and what they have done, and what they have for inventories, and so on. And it was amazing how, how little of those things we had in our community. And I think that was really sort of the, the reason that there was this suggestion that we needed to do these other size parcels. And fairly late in the process, we really started to take a good, hard look at that 10 to 20-acre size range, because we hadn't really even looked at that before. We sort of, for some reason, started kind of at the 20-acre, and we're working from there. And our analysis really showed we needed sort of that smaller site, because it really fit more of our homegrown communities, and that's where they really needed to go. And so that's why we sort of, I think, counted back a little bit on some of the big stuff, and added some of those smaller things.
Commissioner Lettich.
So Carolyn, between now and the middle of April, there are six community forums.
Correct.
And the city council, mid-May, has a public hearing on this.
Yep.
Can you share with us what the public might expect at the community forums, and how the planning commission might be involved in those, as well as getting a recommendation of the city council?
Sure. So, starting with the forums, we are doing six, six different forums in different geographic locations throughout the city. Everyone is welcome to attend any, any forum, whichever works for their calendar. However, there will be probably some focused discussion about how these recommendations affect that particular area. So we, we wanted people to be able to have that kind of focused conversation. So we'll start each, each forum with a presentation based on this one, but certainly refined more for the, for the general public. And then we'll break up into different tables, and we'll have smaller focused conversations about some of the recommendations, and specifically how, what people feel about them, and what, how they think they will impact, and how we think, how we see those impacts moving forward, and opportunities, I should say, not just impacts. And opportunities for questions and answers, and getting more clarity, and where to find more information, and things like that. That's all leading, that's, so we'll have six of those, and they'll probably evolve as we go a little bit. And then, May 14th is when the city council public hearing is. Let me double-check that, but I, May 14th. And so, we would, I, I think it would be wonderful for planning commissioners to attend those forums, if, if you can, you know, or any number of them that you can, just to hear the conversation, so you have a good sense of where it's going. It might help inform your deliberations around this table. And then what I foresee happening here is that, as we discussed a little bit earlier, maybe we go through the pillars one by one, because those give you a little bit broader picture of this, the implements, implementation strategies that we're talking about. And make sure that you understand where the recommendations are coming from. All, you know, we can get as down in the weeds as you want to, really. But primarily, we want you to feel informed, so that you feel good about presenting your own recommendation to the city council. And we'll be back to the city council, I believe, on May 16th for a work session. In that time period, it would be great to have this body be formulating its recommendation, I would say.
Prior to May 14th?
May, I think that it doesn't have to be prior to May, prior to the public hearing, but prior to the council taking action, which will be later May.
So, series of meetings for us to go over the pillars, plus consider the workshops. At the workshops, when you have the breakouts, is it your intention to have citizens respond to particular questions or issues, or have it be kind of open-ended?
We will, we will ask some specific questions. However, we will let the conversation go wherever it needs to go.
Okay, I, yeah, I would suggest some direction, but be a little bit careful not to lead people down some primrose path, yeah?
Absolutely. And it's, it's, we need people to be able to say what's on their mind, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, it might make sense to think about, I mean, to, in parallel with this, have a list of sort of challenges or bullet point challenges, and maybe have a, think through how you would, you know, the two sides. Because I think we know what a lot of them are. People concerned about growing the urban growth boundary, and then there are other neighborhoods that are concerned about being inundated with too much multifamily development in there, or, you know. So if you, if you laid out some of those, if you laid that out for the forums, it might be helpful in not having to reinvent that, and also, people would be exposed- be helpful in not having to reinvent that, and, and also, people would be exposed that there are two sides to a lot of these issues. Same thing with the expansion of the industrial land out, you know, rather than trying to redevelop the ground fields, because you can't do these instantly and we need this land. So, I think it might make sense to have some sort of, or even, even if you don't publish it internally, have that, I think it would be valuable, I think it might even be valuable to, to, for the forums. There's a couple of things I just wanted to mention, are my, you know, we mainly deal with land use, we don't really, I mean, land use is indirectly related to economic development. You know, we don't control what the Fed sets the dollar rate and what's happening in, in Iran, or, or Japan, or whatever. A couple of things I wanted to mention that I, I'm not sure that, you know, we target very well. We keep talking about affordable housing and how if we increase the land base, that really doesn't affect affordable housing. I think if you look at other jurisdictions generally, and it would be impossible to do nowadays, in most of these jurisdictions, but the bigger cities have these rent controlled areas, in other words, where there was, there was property that they knew that people were going to make a lot of, well, we're not going to do that, but maybe there's some way in the new development where we could have incentives for, you know, in other words, you get some incentive for providing some modest a number of percentage of your new units as affordable housing. I mean, I mean, that's really the only way we're going to, you know, either we rely on the, the nonprofits to provide it, or we provide some incentives to get it done, because it's not, just by growing the land base or the economy is not going to improve affordable housing. And then, there's a couple of other things I wanted to mention that are just minor, these are little land use details, but I know that Bethel School District has this piece of property right at the edge of where we're going to expand the urban growth boundary. I mean, again, if you were going to put a school in a new, you know, if we had this line drawn, we wouldn't put it at the edge, we'd put it somewhere in from the edge, so that, you know, when you build stuff around it, you know, it just would be more effective. So, again, I don't know that there's any way that that could be changed or talked to them, if there's some other land that could be swapped that's a little in, more inside, but just in terms of more efficient land use. And the other issue is parks. I know it's a lot easier to secure parkland out at the edge or in areas where it's undeveloped, but we are talking about redeveloping some areas in the city at much higher densities than they are now, and we have to consider that, that means that there's more people there. And some of those areas may already be underserved by neighborhood parks. We have this concept of these 20-minute neighborhoods. So, I really think you have to think through, and, you know, one of your strategies is, is likely you're going to have to buy some land that you don't own in some of these areas if, if you really, really redevelop high-density corridors, and, so I just think that those are, those are some land use and planning issues that I, I think are minor details, but are, you know, important.
They're important.
Commissioner Duncan.
And I have, you know, two things. First, if you could get us a list of the times and locations of all the public forums, I don't know if I've seen them anywhere. I can certainly try to make this.
It was in our AIS.
Well, good, in the AIS, we just got.
Yeah, it's got.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't print it out. Trying to save the paper.
He didn't look on the second page. He didn't look on the back page, that's all. I can see that.
Well, one of the things that, and I noticed it here, that we have collected an enormous amount of information that the recommendations are based on. And, I can see that at the forums, they could turn into a question and answer, kind of backing us all the way up to the beginning and trying to bring the people along, which is not what I think you'd like to get out of the forums. I think you want to get sort of, what do you think about it, and do you have other ideas, and so on, not, why did you do this, and how come we did that? Well, by the way, this is why we did all the industrial, or this is why we looked at that land over there, and so on. So, it would seem to me that trying to get that information, I assume it's on the web, but getting people to spend some time, and maybe you could do it by doing sort of some key white papers on the website, or something that explains the issues that people are going to have, so you get more out of the public input sessions than just somebody sitting there and saying, yeah, here's, here's how we did that, and this is why it all happened, and so on and so forth. Because I'm, I'm not sure that you're going to get completely what you want. So, just, I, I think those forums can be a lot more beneficial for what's ahead of us, if you could bring some of the people up to speed. And I don't know how you educate them, given the amount of information that's out there, but somehow, there's got to be some key elements that can be really brought forth and highlighted on the website. If you're going to, if you want to catch up on things, here are really some areas to concentrate on more on the web versus just the multitude of information that's on that website.
Mr. Jorski.
Part of which will be following up from what Rick said. First of all, notice on these public forums, they're going to be in the newspapers, I assume?
Yes, yes, they have been advertised through paid advertisements and through the kind of community calendars.
But I mean, like, two to three days before they occur in the area?
I have Register Guard and Weekly Eyes running for this, so yes, I don't know the exact date. There's been a big poster campaign and...
Similar along lines of, you know, you set up your own forum, how you want to run it, but what, what Rick was saying here, I, you know, is it half and half, two-third, one-third? In other words, general and specific?
Mm-hmm.
If you talk in generalities is what's happening, and, and not as, let's say, detail the presentation as John, I think that actually can be done very quickly, because when you look at it, not a heck of a lot, except goals that you have to reach has, has been changed. And I think you could do that, and then I think this, there ought to be a part in there, wherever you're holding this meeting, that the people are going to be concerned with are the specifics. Like, if I live down where you're expanding outside UGB, I'm, I'm going to want to talk about that, and you let them know that this is the general, and then we're going to get into what your specifics are. I think that would be, you know, critical.
So, general, the presentation, and then maybe when we break into the groups.
And discussion about the general. I think the general aspects of what's happening, here's where we're expanding, this is why we're doing so many housing units, blah, 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 to meet state goals based on population and this and that, and what you intend to do with wages and increase. That's all, that's all good stuff. And then, maybe, even if it's only a third of the meeting after that, you say, now, within your specific area, you know, like up in mine, we have land being re-designated, or we have park space being eliminated and changed to R1. What does that mean? How do the people react to that? If you live in the southern section, this addition, how does that, how do you feel about that? You know, and I, and I think that, that the people who go there, that's probably why they're going there anyway, and I think that you need to let not it run rampant through the whole meeting, but focus it in on a section of it.
Yep, agreed.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, to follow up a little bit on the advice for the forums, I think you have to go all the way back to, do we have to grow?
You're right.
Those of us who have been embedded in this and understand 3337, House Bill 3337, understand that completely. There's a popu, per, portion of the population who still doesn't understand and/or accept that. I remember, planning staff did a forum about four or five years ago, and Terry Harding got up and said Eugene grows at approximately 8.8, 9% a year. Broke into smaller groups, and one of the people in that group said, you know, I don't really believe that Eugene has to grow, I don't understand that, I just don't buy it. And then, 10 or 15 minutes later, she said, well, when I moved here from Colorado seven years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the level of understanding that you have to get past, and it's intuitively obvious to us at this point, or maybe not intuitively, but we under, we get it, but I think you have to get over that hurdle and understand what, what is mandated and what will happen for some of those folks.
Commissioner Duncan.
Sort of a couple of closing comments. One would be, part of what we couldn't get into was the study of affordable housing in this process, enough. Early on, I sort of started to read a little bit more, and it's amazing, you sort of see two different kinds of affordable housing studies done. One that says, it's aspirational, yeah, we want to get affordable housing for everybody, let's work towards that. And the other one really gets down into the weeds again and really talks about that. And I'm a believer, after going through a lot of this, that I think it's part of the statewide planning goals are some of the challenges we face in trying to resolve affordable housing. We and Eugene aren't going to do that, but I think Eugene could be a leader in starting to push the state on some issues. So, I would hope that as we kind of get a little further along on this, that you start a group that really starts looking at a real comprehensive study about affordable housing, even if we have to challenge the state on it. The other one I would ask about, and I think I've read it either in the paper or something I saw online, was a discussion about, and because we're kind of going through this new boundary readjustment, is there a reason that we're not considering taking the airport inside the UGB? We can do it as a public facility, and we can, I believe we can do that on the statewide planning goals without having to go prove we need it, because we're not going to further develop it other than what the plan is for the master plan out there right now. But it seems to me it gives us that control, and I'm going to argue that there may be a reason to have it in, is that if we start to develop that industrial corridor, we might be able to use part of the airport vacant land as a mitigation bank to mitigate some of the wetlands into that, that area, because it's a no-fly zone, it's a no-build zone, it's a no-everything zone, but that doesn't mean we can't use the land to make better wetlands, where we can offset some of the wetlands that we're talking about annexing, because it's riddled with wetlands up there. And maybe a way that, that's a way the city could sort of help get those lands more readily available in, in a very short time period. So, I would...
That was actually requested by the council for us to come back as part of their discussion of the Envision Eugene expansion.
It's an interesting question. We, we certainly have looked at the issue and whether it makes sense to bring the airport in, and in our preliminary analysis, it looks like we don't necessarily gain a lot of flexibility or control by bringing it into the urban growth boundary, because airports ha, fall under a certain section in the law where they, and Lane County has been very easy for them to work with, so they've been able to do everything that they, that they need to do. So, there's some question there that, but I, I think the interesting point you made about mitigating wetlands, and if that land would need to be inside the urban growth boundary to qualify as a mitigation site, or if it could be outside, that's, I think, an interesting concept to follow up on.
Well, it might be a little easier for us to accomplish it if the city had it inside its urban growth boundary when it was trying to do those things.
Maybe.
That's, it seems to me that we, that's a fairly inexpensive intervention the city could do to help mitigate those wetlands on the lands that we want to develop from an industrial standpoint, so that you're not asking the user who maybe shows up to go through that three-year process. The city may be able to start as soon as, assuming we do annex that land, the city may be able to start day two on that process, that would be one way to help get those lands ready to go.
Yeah, on the same point, I, I'm glad you brought it up, because in our discussion with the Springfield, or, I'm sorry, with Lane County's interest in pulling in the metro boundary to correspond with the Springfield urban growth boundary, we kind of were skipping ahead, and one of the items that we talked about specifically was the Eugene Airport. So, I'm glad the council wants to pursue that. I would be a little cautious about making the jump, though, to creating wetlands out there. Having served on the airport master plan update, and having had some recent experience with this, I know that a pond was recently filled out at the airport, wetland area, because it attracted ducks, which posed a flight hazard for aircraft, so I think we just have to be cautious about that.
And my goal was to not suggest we just move forward and do it, but to take a look and see if it is, because there's a lot of wetlands that can be created that don't, that are not, don't create bird habitat.
Okay.
That are basically ground critter habitats.
Okay.
Commissioner Belcher.
Assuming we're getting to the end, I...
Oh, really? The end of today's presentation, sorry.
Turn the mic.
Yeah, we won't have to worry after December, it'll all be taken care of. As much as you heard feedback from us about how this could be better, I think it has been an exemplary process, and, and I want to congratulate you for your desire to work through the CRG and do this a different way. I think we've got a much better product for it, and I look forward to getting to the next step. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Well, I guess I'll add my thanks again to the staff and to city manager for the excellent job. I think it's a, it's an example for everybody to follow. So, that leaves our final item, which is items...
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And thank staff.
Yep.
That takes us to items from staff. Do we have any items from staff?
You've heard it all.
More to come, yes. And any other items from commissioners? Commissioner Lettich.
Yeah, we have the final decision now on the wireless conditional use permit request, and it's been remanded. What will we be doing with this?
I thought it was being challenged at the course. I will have Steve or Gabe send out an email to let you know what to do with that.
Okay.
Those next steps.
Commissioner Baker.
And related to that, for us, for the new commissioners, could you possibly point us to documents that we may, you know, we may be, there's a lot of documents that we may need to start looking at them.
Come up to speed a little bit.
Sure.
Only several hundred pages.
I think there's 1,400.
1,400?
Yeah.
Several hundreds.
Well, the smaller appeal.
Commissioner Jorski, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, we had, we had, I think we talked somewhere, at least I remember it, about saying that when we start to do things, rather than, let's say, always waiting a year until all this comes into effect, that we should be utilizing the seven pillars in some of the things that we do, and that we were, there was talk about us considering something in relationship to that, so that it could become part of our process. I don't know where that stands, that's why I'm asking.
Is, um, did this come out of our, our retreat? Okay, so, I don't know where that stands either at this point, but we obviously are working with the pillars right now, and maybe it's a, a follow-up after we get through the recommendation, or were you talking about as a way to work through the recommendation?
As I understood the retreat, maybe I was wrong, it was something that we said that if we, I don't know, the process, let's say, adopted to utilize the seven pillars, when we were doing some of our things, we would consider that as part of our evaluation.
Yes.
Now, I don't know how formal that has to be. Actually, I like it to be informal, so that I can feel like I can interpret what the pillars mean, as lots of people interpret what the land use code means, so it would be an interesting way to go about this.
Commissioner Belcher.
I think of a couple of the areas we talked about was at least getting a better understanding of issues of housing affordability, and what are the challenges and opportunities in redeveloping along the corridors and central cores. Those seem to be two of the bigger challenges that we're facing, and the more we know as we work towards writing the code to make those things happen, I think the better we could do.
That's exactly what we can dive into, at least with the redevelopment along corridors, and, and some with affordable housing in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Baker.
No, I just was going to ask, even though we don't have any agendas, it would be helpful just to have the meeting scheduled.
Yes.
Meeting scheduled, because some of us, you know, have, have other work we have to do, and the only way we can sometimes make these things happen is if we reschedule, you know, schedule accordingly, so.
Yeah, so, I, I think in the next day or two, we'll be sending you out an email with a potential list of meeting dates and the individual meeting topics, and are there any, over the next two months, anyone going out of town, or no, have any commitments?
I'm leaving town now and won't be back for, till about the 25th of April.
25th of April.
Well, thanks a lot.
Sorry, Randy.
Okay.
Trust me, I'd rather be home.
Anyone else while we're...
Yeah, I'm leaving next week, and won't be back till about April 5th or 6th.
Okay. That coincides with some staff vacations, too, so that's all right. Anyone else?
I'm leaving on the 24th and get back on April 24th, and I think I could get back on the 30th, or 31st, I guess.
You are, you, I mean, May, May, April 24th and get back May 1st. Okay. Well, I will work with those and send something out.
So, we're meeting tomorrow, is that what it means?
I was just going to say, Monday afternoon's open.
Three and five.
Are there any other items for the commission? John?
Well, I was remiss when I thanked the staff and John for all the work they've done, in not thanking the community for all the efforts that they put in as well. So, let me add that to my statement. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, I'll thank everybody, and adjourn the meeting.